Night on June 4th, 2020. And I call this meeting of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee to order. Given the COVID-19 emergencies and some emergency declarations by Governor Baker, we are allowed to hold these meetings remotely. But we do require to take roll call votes and I want to make sure I have my members online. Mike, are you online? Mike Anton, are you with us?
Oh goodness.
Okay, Paula, are you online? Not hearing Paula either. Chris, are you online still?
Yeah, good evening, I'm here.
Thank you, Chris. Gordon, are you online? Gordon, are you online? All right. Laura, can you hear me all right?
Yes, I'm here and I can hear you fine.
All right. Thank you. Les Leanne, are you here?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And Ed, can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Great. And Eric, hearing me all right?
Yes.
I believe Paula Hatch may have just signed in.
All right, Paula, if you've just joined us online, could you just check in, please? Okay, well, we do have a quorum and we have members from each of the three towns.
Jason, I'm here.
Hey, Mike, how you doing? Glad you could join us. No, no problem at all.
Jason?
Yes?
It's Paula, I'm here too. I couldn't get in via the link, so I'm on by phone.
All right, Paula, thank you.
People leave their mics.
All right. So this evening, we asked members of the three towns leadership to join us. We have administrators of the town, we have select people from the town. We also have finance committee members from the town. We are going to discuss the budget for Silver Lake Regional School this evening. Thank you, Lisa. She just muted everyone so we'd stop getting some of the feedback loops going on. Before we discuss the FY21 Silver Lake Regional School budget this evening, we do have on our agenda talking about some of the CARES Act funds. And Eric Crone has really been the lead for the region and for the elementary committees on talking about the CARES Act funds and how we might be able to pursue those funds. So Eric, I wouldn't mind if you would introduce our guests tonight and just speak to it a little bit. Thank you.
I would love to. Thank you, Jason. So for those that don't know, our county treasurer, I'm going to introduce my very good friend and former neighbor, our treasurer, Tom O'Brien, who also served as our state rep for many years. So he's very familiar with, and he served on school committee as well. So he has a lot of experience. He knows where we are. He's glad he's not where we are. But I did reach out to him about three weeks ago to talk about CARES Act funding and the funding that Plymouth County applied for and received for the member cities and towns within Plymouth County. And so, Tom, I'm just going to give a very quick synopsis of what you told me. Then I'll let you take it, correct anything that I've said that's wrong. And then I think we have some general questions and any new updates that you might have. But when I spoke to Tom, he said that there was going to be a Phase 1 and a Phase 2. Phase 1 would go through expenditures up through June 30th. And Phase 2, which had not been formalized, would begin July 1st and onward. There is $90 million in the overall grant that Plymouth County received to disperse to the member cities and towns. And I know there was a little bit of hullabaloo about the county applying for and distributing the money versus the state. And one of the benefits of that that Tom pointed out to me was that with the county distributing it, they were not taking off that portion of those proceeds to pay for the administration where the state was taking, I believe it was, did you say it was 18% Tom?
They haven't finalized the percentage, Eric, but they'll need to take some administrative costs. They obviously have some expenses that they'll need to cover.
Right, and that makes sense. So, you know, we've been talking both at the elementary level and Silver Lake level about a lot of expenses. And we don't even know really yet what we need for next year that are COVID-related. But Tom did point out that this money was basically for items that we did not budget for, but that we've had to purchase or have to purchase because of COVID-19. So one of the things that's come up more recently...
...school committee meeting. So they discussed...
Penny, could you mute your mic?
Eric, now you're muted.
Yep. Okay, now you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we could apply for grants for PPE and other such things, masks, that sort of thing, anything that could be COVID-related. But, you know, we pretty much shut down when everything happened. So we haven't had to purchase vast amounts of PPE for staff and students. But we are going to incur a lot of expenses for technology with all of the remote learning that's been going on this year and maybe going on next year. You know, we still don't know how we're going to open up next year, but there's hints that it might be a hybrid solution of some kids in school, some kids remote, and swapping them out. And we also know that there will be some kids or families that are vulnerable, you know, that might have immunocompromised systems that will need to remote learn continuously regardless of whether we go back into the buildings or not. So we know that that remote learning is going to go on and we're going to need a lot of technology. And when this all happened, we pushed a lot of technology out to the kids. We led devices out to families so that they could immediately get on board with remote learning. We're not sure what the condition of all those devices are going to be when they come back. So that's a big concern because we're going to have to do the same thing again in the fall. So we're going to have some big expenses with devices, one-on-one devices for the students. Not all students need them. Some have machines at home. But we're certainly going to have to apply for some grants. So from the Kingston Elementary level, I know we're going to... Jill is working with Steve Pello, who's actually on this call as well, to put together a list of items that we need related to COVID-19 and in response to the expenses that we've incurred, that are technology-specific anyways. The PPE and other things, we won't know until we get some better direction from the governor or Desi. So I know that the towns are going to need it for the elementary level. I know that Silver Lake, we're going to need to apply for some funding. And we'd love to potentially apply for some in Phase 1 if we can, if we can purchase some of this technology before the end of June. So I know one of the questions that I'll have, Tom, is how much money is left in Phase 1? How long does the process take? And seeing that it's the 4th of June already, would we make it in time to get in our applications through the towns? And again, Silver Lake can't do it direct. We've got to work with our member towns to apply for these funds. And Tom did mention that rather than splitting up one order between the three towns, maybe one town takes the lead on the grant. But with that, I'll turn it over to you, Tom, if you want to make any statements or corrections. And then Jason might have... He can handle any questions that the school committee members might have. So Tom, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Eric, and thanks for the introduction. And thank you to all the school committee members. As Eric mentioned, I did that for a number of years. I don't envy the situation we find ourselves in and your hard work. I'm told there are selectmen and finance committee people on the meeting as well. And thank you. This is a difficult time to be serving. And I certainly, having done it myself for more than 23 years, appreciate it. As Eric mentioned, on the treasurer for Plymouth County, we've received some money through the federal CARES Act. And I just want to talk a little bit about that and talk about where we're at, answer some of Eric's questions and then open them up to questions. As you folks know, there were three rounds of federal funding. The CARES Act is the third, $2 trillion. Of that $2 trillion, $2.7 billion was allocated for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, there were four governmental entities with a population of more than 500,000 that was eligible to receive a portion of those monies. Those four entities were Norfolk County, Bristol County, Plymouth County, and the city of Boston. Of those four entities, all four ended up applying. The county of Norfolk and the county of Bristol rescinded their application. The city of Boston and Plymouth County did not. As a result, we received 45% of the monies designated for this region. The other 55% went to the state. That 45% is $90 million and is to be spent on the communities in Plymouth County. One of the reasons the commissioners worked very hard to submit the application and make sure that the funding came here was because we want to see it spent in our communities. And so we feel this is the best way to ensure that it's going to get in the door to our communities and that we'll be able to solve some of the problems. As Eric mentioned, this is a federal grant that comes with some strict guidelines. If anybody is suffering from insomnia, please feel free to read the entire piece of legislation. It's more than 300 pages long. I had to take a whole weekend to get through it myself to understand some of the nuances. I don't suggest it as light reading at all. I will also let you know that the guidelines change on a fairly regular basis. So I imagine this is being recorded and people are watching. We should note that it is June 4th. And so what I'm talking about today could change as soon as tomorrow. I can tell you already, the federal government has changed their guidelines three times. And we don't think that's the last of them. So we're working with that, trying to remain flexible as we get these monies out. As Eric mentioned, we decided that the best we could do was a Phase 1 reimbursement phase immediately for our communities for expenses they've incurred that are COVID-related. And what we've done is we created a designated website, PlymouthCountyCares.com. I'll say that one more time, PlymouthCountyCares.com, where you can go on and see all of the information I'm providing to you now. And it starts with what the federal guidelines are. It then comes down to some of our guidelines. There's a link there for the dispersments. So to answer X question about how much money is available to each of the 27 communities in Phase 1, that's on that sheet. I don't have that in front of me. I don't know if it wants to be called up on this meeting, but I encourage people to go and look and see. Because as Eric mentions, what this is going to take, I believe, is a significant amount of coordination between town officials, school officials, public safety officials, finance committee officials, to make sure that the town realizes what resources are available and then applies in the best manner possible to the best source possible for funding and for reimbursement. So many of you know there are other funds available. There are FEMA funds available for schools. There are ESER funds available. All of those things I think you need to be looking at. What I would like to say, however, is the CARES Act is kind of a fallback, all-encompassing position for you. So as you find things are not eligible for other programs, we become a program that is likely a source of funding for some of the things you're looking to recover. It's important that I begin by saying that these funds are not available for revenue replacement. I may not have mentioned this, but they are not available for revenue replacement. The number one question I get is can we replace revenue? No. And so a question that I often get is, there are staff members that have been dedicated instead of doing what might be their normal task to dealing with coronavirus and the pandemic, and can they get that salary back? The answer is no, because that salary was within the budget. It was not an additional expense that was incurred, and that would be revenue replacement. The other important component here is that the items that you're seeking for reimbursement cannot have been budgeted. Now, that gets a little tricky and we could talk about that. But they need to have been, as a result of a pandemic, an unforeseen emergency. That's an easy way to remember it. And so if it was something that you didn't expect to spend and didn't have in the budget, it's likely reimbursable. And then it's for expenses that occurred from March 1st until December 30th, 2020. So those are kind of three overriding guidelines that you need to keep in mind as you're thinking about what might be eligible. Again, you also want to make sure you cannot double dip. So there's no overlap. If you apply for something for reimbursement in some other fund, you cannot apply here. However, if you are denied in some other application and feel that it's eligible under CARES, you can then submit to the CARES program. In Phase 1, we've created a rolling submission chronology and timeline. That's also on the website. In fact, it's right on the front page. If you're looking at, I think Eric might, because he's nodding vigorously. The first deadline was May 29th. Of our 27 towns, we had six, rather, that submitted by that first deadline. That's okay. You haven't missed anything. There's another deadline coming up, a third deadline after that, and a fourth deadline. And you don't have to submit just on the deadline. It's a rolling submission process. And so you can submit expenses that you know you have right now that are eligible. And then two weeks later, you may say, oh, I forgot about this expense. Or one of your department heads brings it to your attention. You can submit that subsequently. As long as you meet the last submission deadline, you're eligible under Phase 1. What we're trying to do is get money in the hands of our communities as quickly as possible. And you'll see on that deadline sheet that we provided that checks will be dispersed two weeks from the deadline. And so those communities that submitted by May 29th will be receiving a check from the Plymouth County CARES Fund by June 12th. And the subsequent dates go forward. The reason we wanted to do that is because we're local. That's why we wanted to bring the money back to Plymouth County. We know you've got budgetary constraints. And if we can get money into this budget, it frees up some flexibility into FY21 for you. So we're really trying to get that Phase 1 money out to you as quickly as possible so that you can get it in and begin to deal with some of the challenges that you face and some of the monies that you desperately need. And so we have a pretty simple process. Now, I say that as a government official. I suppose simple would be just, Tom, can we have some money? It's not quite that simple. But if you look at the bottom of the page, you'll see three buttons. The first button is to download the application. We've prepared an application for you. Your finance directors are very familiar with it. We've had Zoom meetings with the town administrators. We've had Zoom meetings with the legislators and have developed this process. That application needs to be filled out. If you go to the second button, it's a request form. I think it's one or two pages only. So that's pretty simple. It has a drop-down, fillable component. So you can select which of the six overarching CARES categories it falls under. And then you list the item. You will need to submit invoices. We can't just take it on faith in your good word and promise. But you have to evidence the expenditure. And then the third button is to download the submission. You'll see it's an email address. You submit it to that process. That goes directly to the CPA that we have retained the services to review all the applications. That application then comes up to the comptroller here at Plymouth County for a second review. It will then come to my desk for a third review and assembly into a warrant for the commissioners to sign to produce a check. Now, that sounds like a lengthy process, but we've windowed it down so that can happen within four or five days. If any of you have applied to federal monies before, you know, that type of turnaround is unheard of. I talked to folks at other towns that tell me they're waiting for FEMA money from 2014. So we're in a situation where we know you need the money now. And we've created a system that we think is responsive to those needs and gets money in your hands quickly. I know there will be a lot of questions about what about this expense? What about that expense? I'm not sure this is the best forum to do that, although we can. There is a button on the page to submit questions. You can submit that question. We're tallying those questions up. We're presenting them to our entire team, which includes accountants and attorneys and auditors, making sure that we can answer those questions. And then we'll put them up on the municipal frequently asked questions. We expect to have a number of them up early next week that I think will address some more of the global issues that you folks are facing. But what we've tried to do is bring the money local and get the money out as quickly as we can. That in a nutshell is the process. I'm sure there are some questions, but we really feel that this will benefit our 27 communities. We've had a real positive response from a number of them. There are still questions about this. Again, I mentioned the feds changed the guidelines regularly. The state's not sure how to react to all of this. So we're monitoring those situations. But Phase 1 is secure and underway, and we will be releasing that money as quickly as it's requested. So I hope that was a good, relatively short summary. Those of you who know me well and they see so many friendly faces on this call know that I have a propensity for loquaciousness in this. But I tried to keep it to a minimum so that we could get right to some of the questions you may have. So again, thank you for having me and I'm here if I can help. Also, don't hesitate to shoot me an email or give me a call. Eric Crone shouldn't be the only one that gets to call me midday.
So Tom, thank you so much. That's exactly what I was hoping for, the information that you laid out for us here tonight. And Eric, great way of summarizing the introduction as well. We wanted to have you here tonight just to make sure that we were proceeding in the proper pathway. I'm just going to explain how the schools of our three towns are broken down for people who might not understand the structure. We actually have four different school committees. We have a school committee for each of the towns for their K-6 population. And then we have a school committee for the regional, which is 7 through 12. We do have a mechanism by which we can meet and work together. It's called a joint meeting. And myself and the chairman of Union 31, which is the group of the three elementary committees put together, Mike Anton, we have called for a joint meeting next week on Tuesday night at 7:00 PM. And the purpose of that meeting is to go over some items that the administration has put together that they believe that we would qualify for the CARES Act's fund. So the hopes there, Tom, is that we can put together one unified package instead of you receiving packages from all the disparate schools. And then we could manage to disperse them to the schools that require those funds and those items. Does anybody from the committee have a question? I see Eric has one. So Eric, I'll put you up now. Anybody else from the committee, please chime into the chat and I will call on you next.
Thank you, Jason, and thank you, Tom, for the additional information. It does look like Phase 1 is about a quarter of the overall grant money, roughly. And in looking that, I did see the soft caps for Kingston, Halifax, and Plimpton. And just so folks know, in Phase 1, it looks like Kingston is about $586,000, Halifax is $345,000, and Plimpton's $130,000. So arguably, the towns, other departments, fire, police, and all of their departments would also be eligible for reimbursement for those funds. So I have two questions. One would be, is it safe to say that the Phase 2 would just be triple the amounts for each town? Is that safe to say, Tom, do you think?
No. So Phase 2, and we're contemplating. Phase 1 is just based on population, a quick rubric to get the numbers out. We've been asked to consider need by community. Some communities in Plymouth County have been hit harder than others. So we're analyzing a rubric that might work. It is safe to say in Phase 2 that there will be more money for all towns. But I wouldn't suggest it's simply a doubling of what's available. We're also going to be developing a Phase 3 and a Phase 4, depending on what guidance we get at the federal level. The focus right now is Phase 1. We were surprised that only six communities responded in the first instance. But we know there's a lot of work that needs to be done. So really, I wouldn't assume it's just a doubling, but it will be of some more money after this round.
So my next question is, does it have to be something we've already purchased? Or can we apply for the money in order to make the purchase?
So right now, any expense that's made prior to June 30th is an eligible expense. So it has to be purchased or at least ordered with an invoice that is presentable. We have been asked about preapproving expenses in subsequent phases. And that's a conversation we're having about Phase 2 and Phase 3. But that is not the case for Phase 1. Phase 1 are for actual expenditures that have been made or will be made by June 30th.
Okay, thank you.
Just as a follow-up to that, so based on the conversation you just had with Eric about the monies allocated to each town, we would need to make sure we're coordinating as a school district with our select people and with our finance committees to make sure we're not draining more of our percentage of those funds than the town was maybe calculating into theirs, Tom?
Yes, and I can't stress that enough, Jason. You've hit it. It has to be a coordination. Absent that, the schools may not get quite what they might need because the town might not be aware. The other concern, of course, is that the schools may eat up a larger portion. So there really needs to be that concerted effort to look at actual expenses, see where everybody's at. My sense is there's space. We're seeing some communities that had a lot of expenses, some that didn't have as many. And I think a concerted effort really will maximize, on behalf of the three towns, which, as you know, are very near and dear to my heart, will maximize the reimbursement level for each of them.
Great. So obviously, there's a lot of those folks online right now. And I saw them take note when I mentioned we're having a meeting next Tuesday to discuss some of those items. So obviously, we would love you to be at that meeting and participate. Our town leadership would be important in coordinating to make sure, like Tom just said, that we're not eating up too much of the allocations to the towns, but also we're not leaving funds on the table that we could benefit from. Gordon, you had a question you'd like to ask? Go ahead.
Hi, Tom. Gordon Heters, how are you?
Gordon, I'm well. How are you doing?
Doing all right. So in regards to personnel for cleaning the schools in the subsequent phases, where we have no idea whether or not we're going to be remote distance learning or some hybrid system, would you guys entertain an increase to the custodial staff or a contract services staff that need to be hired to keep the schools clean in between whatever hybrid system we have to move forward with?
So Gordon, it's not going to be what we entertain, but what the federal law allows. And right now, the guidelines are very strict. Right now, they don't envision that. But as I mentioned at the start of this, and I'll try and mention a few times, those guidelines are changing. They just changed three days ago, and it allowed some more things. So right now, what I can say is focus on your expenses that you have. I know we're going to be thinking about the future. We are trying to set up a process, at least for these funds, where there will be some preauthorization, where you will say, hey, we have this potential expense. Will you think this will be eligible? That'll get submitted to our team for review. But that's not Phase 1, and we're waiting for additional guidance from the feds. We're told there's going to be another release of guidance in seven days. So it's so hard to predict beyond that. Here's what I can tell you. The CARES Act is intended to be for those unforeseen expenses that are a direct result of COVID that weren't in the budget. So if you feel that qualifies, a lot of this is just common sense, then it likely will. The CARES Act is fairly broad. The only thing that it says is it can't be for revenue replacement. So the one question I ask is can we hire more staff and do things like that? Right now, no, I don't see those guidance changes. But certainly, if you need more supplies, a number of communities, for instance, have gone out and purchased the fogging units where they can go in and clean the schools very quickly with one person or two, kind of have a jet pack on the back. Those are clearly legitimate expenses. So we're just going to keep monitoring. We're going to update that page as quickly as we can and try and develop those things in Phases 2, 3, and 4.
Are there any other questions for Tom from the committee? Also, through me, I would entertain any questions from any of our other leadership members from the towns as well, if you have a question for Tom at this time. All right. It looks like you're off the hook, Tom. You did a great job with your presentation. So I really appreciate your time tonight. And obviously, next Tuesday, we're going to put together some lists that our administration brings forth to us and discuss some of the items and how we might be approaching applying for those CARE Act funds. We appreciate your diligence in looking out for the county and really, really didn't realize how much that was going to directly impact our function when all of this came to pass down at DC. So I applaud you guys for grabbing onto those funds for us. Seeing no further questions, are we good here?
Well, Jason, I'll just say thank you very much. Thanks for having me. Again, just give me some notice if you need me some other time. I'm happy to be here. As communities realize that these funds are available and what the county did, we appreciate the thanks because what we're trying to do is really make sure this money gets to these towns that so desperately need it. So thank you all, everyone on the call, for your hard work. I really appreciate it. So thank you all, everyone on the call for your hard work, I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom, we'll be in touch, appreciate it. All right, so our next item on tonight's agenda is to discuss the FY21 budget for Silverlake. So as everyone knows at this point, we did pass a budget on March 12th. It was a budget that all three towns had supported, but then the world changed and revenues became unknown and unpredictable. So working through this with the towns, we, the region, had come to a point where we were accepting the request for reductions in our budget. The number that was being put out, and it was not put out casually or off the cuff, was asking for about a $525,000 reduction in the assessments to the three towns. This was based on the best evidence we have of what the state funding might look like coming in from Beacon Hill. And that would be a reduction to Kingston specifically of $300,000 from their assessment, which was one of the direct requests. And speaking with Halifax, we were asked to try and look at what our FY20 budget was and meet some incremental cost increases that were obligations through contractual means. And that didn't necessarily mean through personnel contractual means, but it meant things like our Plymouth County Retirement Fund, which obviously, we couldn't level fund with FY20 numbers. We had to increase it to maintain the protection for our aides who've worked and given us so many good years of their career here at Silverlake. So last week, we got some additional news. We got some news that DESI wanted us to give them a budget that they could then use to determine a 1/12 budget scale for us. This kind of came out of the blue, it caught us unawares. We didn't really have time to react to it. And some of the school committee members were taken aback by DESI asking us to give them budget numbers when they won't give us an inkling of what our Chapter 70 funding is going to look like. And how our Chapter 70 funding looks like at the region is very, very different than how it looks for an individual town and community. Chapter 70 funds directly flow to the district, and we get about $7.3 million in Chapter 70 funds here at the region to help us pay our operations. So a 1% decrease to that, we all can do the math, is $73,000. When we agreed to reduce the assessments to the towns by $525,000, we weren't really doing anything to protect ourselves from a decrease in Chapter 70 funding. So we're hearing from finance committee members from across the Commonwealth that they're using numbers from anywhere from a 5% to a 15% reduction in state aid, and we had not done anything at the district level to cover ourselves for that yet. So out of frustration and out of an act of rebellion against the state, we chose to pass over voting new numbers last week and just sent to DESI the original budget from March 12th. We didn't feel that it was in our best interest to try and satisfy their ridiculous request for a number from us when they won't give us 30% of our budget to work with. In conversations with the town over the last week, I realized the situation that we had put them into a certain extent. We were going to request that they vote no to that proposed budget. We realized that the numbers from March 12th are no longer legitimate numbers that we can request from our three towns. In asking them to vote no for our budget, it would have caused us to revert back to our FY20 numbers by default. Now, that would be about a $706,000 reduction from what we proposed on March 12th. The problem with this method is we would then still need to come back together and establish an actual budget once we have our Chapter 70 funds. This would cause our towns to have to have a special town meeting, perhaps just for the sake of the school. This would also potentially leave off the table our ability to access any E and D funds. Right now, we could access about $125,000 in E and D funds and put it towards next year's budget. If we waited until after June 30th, we would lose access to those funds, which would just mean we'd need to cut $125,000 deeper than we actually need to cut now. The other thing is if we never come to resolution with our own budget, if we can never get two of our three towns to support our gambit, the state would step in in December and take over the finances for the region. We'd lose local control of our budget. So what I propose for us to do here tonight is try and satisfy as many of these difficult situations as possible. So I did ask Christine Healy to look into whether or not we could reduce the assessment to the towns by $525,000 and hold back $181,000 for our own protection and potential reductions to Chapter 70 funding. That would be a 2.5% cushion for reduction. It's not very much, and that is much lower than any numbers I'm hearing put out right now from any other community or school system in the state. So we would end up with the same amount of number, we would end up with a $706,000 reduction, but we would have a budget that could hold up for 12 months. We could allow our towns to walk into town meetings this month and vote yes in support of the schools because that's truly what they've been doing the whole time. I think it would be confusing to the populations of our communities to see our town leadership stand up and vote no for the school budgets. I just, I'm afraid it sends the wrong message. And realizing the loss of the access to those E and D funds and having potentially to have to cut even deeper than we intended originally, just brought me to the point where I would like to propose that we reduce our budget by $706,000 with a $525,000 reduction to the assessments of our member towns and holding back a $181,000 reduction from our calculated Chapter 70 funds. So I have a motion on the floor, would anyone like to second it?
I'll second it, that's Eric.
Thank you, Eric. So I imagine there may be some questions, comments, concerns, and I'll entertain those now, Eric, go ahead.
So I've been in a group with other regional school committee members discussing this very issue and kind of trying to feel out what other people are anticipating for reductions to state aid, and I've heard the same thing. Heard in one district, they were looking at 20%. But these are, as you said, these are all guesses. We're doing our best educated guess, but we don't really know. So Kingston has assumed a 15%, Halifax is assuming an 8%, I'm not sure what Plimpton is assuming. And if we vote this budget, we're assuming about a 2%. So it could come back very different, we don't know. I did read today that the chairman of the Senate Ways and Means Committee had indicated in a Q and A session that they are going to put priority on the Chapter 70 funding, but that just means that they could hit unrestricted general government aid harder to fund Chapter 70. So in the end, our member towns could still be in just as much of a pickle, but it could certainly change how things look for Silverlake. So we could be level funded. So if we are level funded, this is, I sort of have a two-part question. If Chapter 70 is level funded, that we don't have that decrease, we could simply revote the budget once we get a handle on that state aid. And then if the towns agree, they just don't hold a special town election, which would basically affirm our budget? That my assumption's correct, yes?
So Eric, I would have to check with the towns on that, but, and also check with Christine. We're talking about potentially holding back $125,000 from flowing back into our E and D in order to help pay for our operating budget this year. Now, we all know that the towns have been very thankful that we've used our E and D funds over the past six years to help pay our capital expenses instead of having to put warrants up every year.
Right.
I would definitely, I would definitely approach the towns and ask them if we ended up getting a little bit more funds from Chapter 70 than we thought, could we allow that to flow back to replace the E and D that we're pulling out now at this point? I think it's a conversation that we can have when and if it happens. Again, once the numbers come in, a lot of us might have to go back to the drawing board and revoke budgets and potentially have special town meetings. My concern with what we did with the budget last week was we, we ourselves could have potentially been forcing some special town meetings to happen that wouldn't necessarily have to happen. And considering the whole reason why we're doing these remote conversations right now and why students haven't been in school, I think it's also incumbent upon us morally to try and not force people to have to get together to vote something a second time. Now, if every department in town has to do it, that's a different story. But I just, I personally didn't feel right about forcing the hands of the towns. The towns are not the reason why we're having the problems with our budget. The towns have been extremely cooperative in the way we've been working together. The frustration that the committee is feeling, I'm speaking for myself, but I've heard it loud and clear from, from members of the committee, the frustration is with the state. And you know, I've been in contact with the state house on a daily basis repeatedly, and they are working hard. Not only are they trying to come up with next year's budget right now, they're also trying to come up with a supplemental budget for July 1. And they're having their own issues with remote meetings like this and technology and planning problems. So my, my hope is that with passing what I just put forth for all you to consider is we would achieve what we did by default last week, but we would have more stability with the budget for 12 months long-term if it ends up being the right numbers, and we would not force the towns to have to vote no against our proposal either. I'm just very concerned about that. And Eric, you're the one who brought up the idea of us potentially holding back some of the funds for Chapter 70, and Christine spent some time over the week looking into it and did find the ways and the mechanisms to allow that to happen. Anybody else from the committee like to speak up? Christine, go ahead.
What I wanted to mention about regional Chapter 70 is that up until last week, whenever I was at a DESI meeting, a Zoom meeting, a webinar, whatever it was, they were saying that Chapter 70 would remain whole. Last Friday, they weren't saying that anymore, and they were saying that follow the guidance that you're hearing from representatives from your other towns, that's the best option you have right now. And that's what makes me a believer in this plan, is that when I heard that, I said, I'm not sure what our other, what our next best option is. So I think that kind of addresses what would work for Silverlake, the students and the region. I just wanted to mention that, that DESI is not saying what they were saying originally about Chapter 78.
Right, and that sounds similar to what Tom was saying. The rules keep changing, the information keeps changing and evolving. You know, one of the other major concerns I have is regional transportation. We know that regional schools represent about 25% of the state legislators up on Beacon Hill. If they want an area to cut some of the budget by, that's not going to affect most of their constituents, it could be regional transportation. Gordon, you up the floor, go ahead.
Thanks, Jason. I don't understand why you would propose the 2% or 2.5% cut. I don't think that's realistic. And I think if we're going to look to pass a budget that, that we're sending to the towns, because we're not only sending them assessments, we're sending them our budget. And I think we need to send a realistic budget if we're going to redo the budget tonight. I think you have, the town of Halifax is at an 8% reduction for, for total state aid. They're looking at a 35% reduction in unrestricted aid and a 2% reduction in Chapter 70, and that's how they got to the 8% overall reduction. So you have the town of Kingston looking at 15%. You look at the math of what the tax revenues are coming in at, and the numbers seem a lot closer to the 15% than the 8 overall. I don't think a 2% reduction for us is, we're going to be right back here again, voting another budget. And I think we ought to be looking at voting tonight, if we're going to change the budget, a realistic budget, because if the cost to towns $15,000 to put on another town meeting, so be it. We're going to be talking about $1 million if it's at 15%. We're going to be talking anywhere from 1.7 to $2 million depending upon negotiations. So I don't think a $15,000 cost to the towns to hold another set of town meetings is high cost to ask them to pay.
All right, I appreciate your input, Gordon, there. My comments are not scrolling up as quickly as I'd like, so I'm like, okay, Leslie Anne, you're up next, go ahead.
Thanks, Jason. I'm just wondering, is there a way to protect the 125K without voting a whole nother budget?
Christine, would you like to speak to that?
What do you mean protecting the 125,000? My, the 125,000 is, is money that we know that we're contributing in addition to our E and D, in addition to what we would normally contribute to E and D at the end of the year. So if we had additional savings of between $100,000, $200,000, between excess revenues and budget that we didn't spend, we're expecting that number to be higher going into next year because of the transportation costs that are reduced, because of utility costs that are reduced, and all any other items. So this was in excess of what we traditionally return to E and D. Does that answer your question?
It does, I'm just trying to figure out a way to separate it from trying to figure out a whole new budget number, to Gordon's point.
That can be used in a couple of different ways. It can be used to, the E and D is a funding source of our budget, so it's not necessarily a budget reduction, it's adding additional funding source. So we could use that as an additional funding source and change the Chapter 70 amount. I'm just, you're trying to think, visualize how well that could work.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering out loud if I may, Mr. Chair, and I don't know the answer to this, but as you said, for the last six years, we've been, we have been not burdening the towns with warrants on capital items. So would this, would this impact our ability to continue doing that? Or would we be going back to the towns for capital items? Or would we just not be funding capital infrastructure needs? And God knows, we've got roof issues and boiler issues and all kinds of stuff that need to be paid for.
I'm trying to think of the best way to address that. We have had several really good years coming off of when Pembroke, we settled up with Pembroke, the final dissolution of the previous region. So we have been able to fund our capital plan because we have had those excess funds. Every year, we have been contributing to E and D because of budget that we didn't spend or because of excess revenues. I budget really conservatively, so that's a, that's a place where a lot of those revenues come from. What this would mean is that going forward, we know that we would not be able to be funding capital plans at the level we currently are. And we kind of have a plan in place to maybe fund it based on what we know that that savings and revenue and excess budget funds would be going forward. So we would be able to continue supporting our capital plan, just maybe not at the level that we have been able to the past four or five years.
Okay, Leslie Anne, does that, does that answer your question?
Yep, for now, thanks.
No problem, Gordon, back to you.
So we know there's going to be an additional $125,000 that wasn't planned for. Can we expend that 125 right now from within the budget on capital items and capture that spend right now so that we can advance some of the items that we have on the capital plan? Because we know that we have reductions in other places in the budget. We know that E and D should increase for the money that we didn't spend this year on different items. So can, can we take that known 125 and spend that money on capital items right now?
Christine, could you speak to that for me?
Theoretically, we could. So instead of waiting until the new year to take care of some of those items in the capital plan, could we do that now? Theoretically, we could. Theoretically, we could. The tough thing is some of those items have a leeway because there's planning that has to be done. There's per, there's all kinds of obstacles to get us to that point we're actually putting in place, but we could possibly look at that list and see if this, there are some things that are more immediate that we could take care of during the current year, if that was the wish of the committee.
Any other questions from the committee right now? So I, I'm, I'm going to take an opportunity to speak just in, in response to your idea, Gordon, uh, about cutting even deeper right now. Um. What I want to do right now is I want to be able to work with our towns with what they've set forth for us. As, as far as I know, the budget that we're presenting right now would satisfy all three of our communities. Um, I don't see anything in the reduction, um, to Plimpton, to Kingston, or Halifax that doesn't fall into the guidance that I've, I've received from any of the three towns. I understand your trepidation with us using a two and a half percent holdback on chapter seventy funds. Um, like Christine had mentioned to you, I had also heard, um, that they were going to try and at least level fund chapter seventy. A, as many of you know, they had put through an additional $130 billion towards chapter seventy. Um, trying to expand what was known as the Foundation Budget Review Commission guidelines. Um, we were not going to realize any of those funds here in Silver Lake. I believe in House one, we were increasing by $30 per pupil. We were getting about a $43,000 increase from last year's number. Um. I do know, I, I talked with the office of the Senate President, um, just yesterday. And, um, they reiterated the letter that all of Massachusetts state senators with the exception of one sent down to Washington, um, to our delegation down there and to the Trump administration. And basically that letter said, can you please stop playing political football, um, with pork filled bills? During the 2008, 2009 recession, chapter seventy was level funded because of federal federal funds. And we are asking our congressional delegation to try and at least do that much for us again this time. Um, we only had a $2.5 billion shortfall back in 2008, 2009 as a state. Um, the numbers we're hearing right now for the state revenue shortfall, um, is higher than that. The Heroes Act has made no movement down in Washington. That's a $3 trillion package, which includes 100 billion for schools across the United States. If they could separate out those funds, it would probably pass in a heartbeat. And we wouldn't have to be worrying and having this conversation, so. I would still like to move this number tonight and work with our towns and we can worry about the state number when the state number comes in. I feel we're going to have to come back to this table potentially anyways, and I don't want to have to do it because um, we didn't make some sort of move tonight that our three communities can, that at least our three communities can live with. Anybody else from the committee? There is a motion on the floor, so if anybody wants to speak to this before I do a roll call vote. Now is your opportunity from the committee. Okay, seeing none, this is a budget vote, so this takes a two thirds majority. On the regional school, myself and Mike Anton from Plimpton only count as one vote. The members from Halifax and Kingston each count as two votes. To pass tonight's budget, I would need two thirds of the entire membership of Silver Lake Regional School Committee, which would be a total of 11 yes votes. Would the committee like me to repeat my motion?
Yes, Jason.
Okay, Eric wants to say something first and then I'll repeat the motion before we take the vote. Ed, go ahead, Eric.
So I'll be quick for once, I promise. Um. I, I know this is a horrible vote. Um, nobody wants to do this, but I, I really agree with Jason. I think we really do need to um, to move forward with this vote, um, to make things a little bit easier to use that E and D funding, if, if that's what we're going to do. Um, but just to make a, a move forward. I mean, it, it, I, I hate doing this. Um, but I just feel like it's the right thing to do, um, for our towns, for our district, for, for everybody.
Thank you, Eric. Anybody else from the committee before I repeat the motion? And Gordon just wanted to put down FY 20, chapter seventy was 11.67% of the total state budget and the total state budget was $44.4 billion in FY 20. Uh, 5.2 billion of which was spent on schools. So it is a large portion of the state budget and if the state budget takes a hit. I think Gordon's trying to illustrate there is a substantial chance that chapter seventy will also take a hit. All right. So my motion here this evening is to reduce our proposed budget from March 12th by $706,000 with a $525,000 reduction to the assessment of our three towns in total. And holding back a reduction of $181,000 from our calculated chapter seventy funds. So this is a roll call vote. Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Paula?
Yes.
Thank you, Paula. Chris?
Yeah.
Gordon?
No.
Thank you, Gordon. Laura?
Yes.
Thank you, Laura. Leslie Ann?
No.
Thank you, Leslie Ann. Ed?
Yes.
Thank you, Ed. Eric?
Yes.
Thank you, Eric. And I am a yes as well. So we have a budget and the budget reflects what our three communities asked us to do. We do definitely have some more work to do. Um, it's incumbent upon us to give direction to the superintendent and the administration of where we believe those cuts should come from. And I'm going to propose that we have a meeting to do that specific job and that job only on Tuesday, June 16th. Unless there is an issue with any of the committee members or the administration with that date.
Jason, I have a follow up question.
Um, go ahead.
I've been putting it in the chat, but I don't, I, I know you're trying to manage a whole big meeting, so.
Thank you.
Um, so, um, in the journey that we are going down together during this, I, bit of a whitewater rafting trip, I think. Um, I'm wondering. It seems to me that the process can't changes quite a bit very quickly to the point that Christine was making and Tom O'Brien was making and everybody else was making. So for me, I'm wondering if this, we can revisit this again next week. We seem to be revisiting it every week. So I'm just suggesting that we all voted no last week and now you're asked, you asked us to vote yes. So the committee did. So what's going to stop us from voting differently next week?
There's nothing that would stop a member from bringing forth, um, a motion to change the budget yet again next week. Um, this motion came out of conversations with uh, members and leadership of the communities that support our schools that have been working with us since September to come up with a budget. Um, they understood our frustration after some explanation. At first, um, there was some questions about why we would, we did what we did last week. Um, and I stand by that vote, Leslie Ann. I, I was very proud of us, um, sending to Desi that message that we, we rejected their arbitrary date of June 1st to give them a number to come up with 112 budgets for us. Um, but in conversation with town officials and just bringing forth a unified message to our towns in such an uncertain time. Um, if somebody brought up a motion to change our budget next week, I know I would stand against it. Um, so again, uh, Paul, that's a good point here. Um. Since we took a vote and it was voted affirmative, affirmatively, it would take someone from the prevailing side to re-entertain the issue. Thank you, Paula, for that parliamentary reminder. Uh, I appreciate that. Um. So the reason why I didn't call for a meeting next week is because there's some other business to be done next week and some more information coming in next week. We're going to have a meeting for the CARES Act Fund where all four committees will be in attendance. Um, and I know that several members of the committees from all four towns have already signed up for workshop on FY 20. That's with the Assistant Commissioner of Desi, Jay Sullivan. Um, we're hoping to have some better numbers, um, gleaned from that meeting next Thursday night. Uh, so that would be the 11th. And then with that information in hand, we would be able to reassemble on the 16th, hopefully to make, um, some better educated choices of where we're going to find, um, the $706,000 line by line, item by item. Um, you know, that the superintendent and her team put together for us a couple of weeks ago. It also gives us a couple more days to put our heads together to fight for the areas we believe should not be cut from and the areas that we believe we can lead, live with cutting. Um, that's going to be the date where we, we finally come to the table and we give our two cents of where those cuts are going to come from directly. So that's why the Tuesday and not next week. Anybody have any problems with meeting on Tuesday, the 16th? From the committee. Ah, Christine, I have the official vote language. Christine, go ahead.
I just have the official votes that we need to, um, meet all the requirements for the region to move forward.
All right.
That the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approved the 2020, 2021 operating budget of as the amount deemed necessary for the operation of the regional schools in the Silver Lake District for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Paula?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Gordon?
So I just have a question. How, how are we voting on a budget that we don't know what we're voting on? We don't, we don't know what the cuts are that we're going to make.
Okay, Christine.
Overall total, but without knowing what we're actually doing, I think this is premature. I vote no.
Okay, Christine, can you explain to Gordon where tho- these numbers are coming out of?
Where the cuts are coming out of?
No, no.
Oh.
We haven't made any specific
Correct.
Cuts. How do we have these numbers? Just for Gordon's information and anyone else who is wondering.
Well, for the budget, I'm using the FY 20 budget amount. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question. Um. And no, with the understanding that we will have to make the appropriate cuts to meet that level.
But will that change any of these three different votes we take tonight?
Well, I'll ask for tonight for two, the one that we're taking and then the one for E and D, because we already voted our, well, we've already voted our capital plan and we're also already voted our, um, debt that we have.
So I think the confusion for many of us who, who serve on uh, the elementary committees as well is in those committees, we vote three different numbers.
Correct, correct, correct.
Here at the region, we vote the overall budget and we send that as an assessment breakdown to the town and they vote their assessment.
Correct. That's what we have traditionally done. The towns could also vote our budget if they, if they, they could vote our budget and our assessment. And what that would do would protect us from if in years past, we had an issue where chapter set, well, minimum contribution changed late, very late after assessments are issued. If towns voted our budget and then also voted the assessment, that would give us the flexibility to change the assessments. So that we wouldn't have the situation like we had years ago with Kingston and Plimpton with that, um, money flowing back and forth.
Yeah, we're not going to go there tonight.
Okay.
Another layer of complication. Um, so the number we're voting right now is the overall budget number.
Correct.
Correct. So we do know that we can meet that by making the cuts on the 16th. And that will be our target number and that's what we're sending to the towns for town meeting. So I understand your no vote. Gordon, 100% based on that. Um.
Jason, I think Paula has a question.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yep. Jason, can I just, what we're doing right now is just voting the number that goes with the prior vote we just took in a passed by a two thirds vote. If, if that's correct, right? It's just the number that corresponds to that.
That's right. We're just putting it in the form that Christine needs in order to send it to the towns.
Okay, I thought, so I just thought maybe that would be kind of helpful to clarify.
Thank you, Paula. Appreciate it. So so far I have a yes from Mike, a yes from Paula, a yes from Chris, a no from Gordon. Um, Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie Ann?
No.
Thank you. Ed?
Yes.
Thank you. Eric?
Yes.
And a yes from Jason as well, so that passes. So now on to E and D, Christine?
Yes, the use of E and D.
Okay.
That the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approves the use of $125,000 of excess and deficiency funds to fund the 2020, 2021 operating budget.
So moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Eric. But Christine?
All right. Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. Paula?
Yes.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah.
Thank you. Gordon?
No.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie Ann?
No.
Thank you. Ed?
Yes.
Thank you. Eric?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. I know it wasn't unanimous, but I thank everybody for their vote. That passes. Whew, okay.
So, so Mr. Chair, may I just make a quick comment?
Please do.
So I'm just, I'm, I'm just observing that we just voted a number that none of us have any confidence in. So.
We voted a number that, that we don't believe the state, um, has given us enough information to, to actually come up with. But that our communities have asked us to try our very best to come up with a number that they could use at town meeting to show their support for our schools. And considering the amount of cooperation we've received from all three towns throughout our budget process and during the shutdown. Um, I think it was only a good faith effort tonight that we made here um, to try and come to some amenable agreement that the towns can now support a town meeting this month. I understand your frustration. I understand everyone's frustration on the committee and even from the towns that we have to cut programs at Silver Lake Regional Schools. Um, it's not something that any of us enjoy doing. Um, but it is incumbent upon us to try and be good partners in this, um, process. And on Tuesday, June 16th, we will come to the table with quite a bit of time under our belt to have reviewed the package put together by the superintendent to make our recommendations for how we come up with that $706,000 in cuts. Anybody else from the committee on the budget at this point?
Hey, this is Gordon. I just want to say we're putting the cart before the horse here by doing this. We, we, we should never vote a budget that we don't know what's inside of before sending that along. I understand the process, but the process is being rushed because the towns don't want to go through the process. And I don't think we're advocating for our school by doing this.
Anybody else? Okay, so we're moving on to some old business of COVID-19 emergency updates. And I will hand this over to the superintendent if there are any updates related to COVID-19.
Well, the commissioner had announced that he would be providing, um, some guidance for summer programming. And also for, uh, supplies that would be needed for summer programming, which could also be used to help inform purchases for the fall. Those updates have not yet, um, been provided. He also explained that, um, by June 15th, there should be recommendations for, um, or guidance and maybe, um, beyond recommendations or expectations as to what the fall uh, will look like, but also noting that that could change at any time due to the uncertain nature and the impact of the virus. So that's all I have for you in terms of, um, updates. I know that we will be sending out shortly surveys again for their input regarding their experience with the remote learning this spring, but also to begin soliciting some input in terms of concerns regarding that's next steps in reentry.
So Ed and I were just at the Pilgrim Area Collaborative Board of Directors meeting before this evening's Silver Lake Regional School Committee meeting. And we had heard that the Association of State Collaboratives is actually pressing on the commissioner now that the governor has said that day camps can open up over the summer to allow our students who are at most need for one-on-one instruction and direct instruction from teachers to be receiving that instruction at summer school. So we know the guidance is still up in the air based on what the commissioner said last week, but there is pushback now that we're going to allow camps to open, but we don't necessarily have the guidance on what summer school can look like at this point. So I just wanted to bring that to bear as well. You know, Ed and I and Mike's been on the collaborative before, Paula, I believe, has sat there before. You know, these are our students who have the most needs educationally. And, you know, this has been a real struggle for them the past three months, being out of school and not having those social connections and that one-on-one service delivery the way that they're used to having it. So to allow day camps to operate and not allow those kids to have those direct one-on-one interactions with their teachers would just be a shame. So thank you for your update, Jill. Any questions for Jill or the administration on the COVID-19 update? All right. So my chat is a mess right now. It will not scroll for me at all. So if anybody from the committee has a comment, please just speak out. If not.
Jason?
Go ahead, Gordon.
When are the town meetings for Kingston and Plimpton?
Kingston is June 13th.
So we're not going to have a budget in place so everybody knows what's inside of it until after they vote on it. So we can't tell them at town meeting what's going to be inside the budget.
No, we can't. We can give them the list of items that the superintendent has supplied to us in order to make those cuts, but we cannot tell them specifically what cuts have been made to meet that number at this point. You are correct.
So why are we doing this?
Again, we've been asked by Plimpton and Kingston to have a number. I've had communication with both of those townhouses over the course of the week. They understood our frustration with the state of Massachusetts, but they asked us if we could please present them with a number that they could go to town meeting with and support. So that's why we did what we did tonight.
Again, I just think this is a total mistake. We just we're asking them to vote a budget that they don't know what's inside of.
Yeah, this is this seems to be like a very backwards process to me.
It is a very backwards process and it's a very backward situation we find ourselves in. I think it speaks to a level of trust we have between the towns and the committee. We have publicly put out on the town's webpage, on the school's webpage, the list of items and proposed tier one and tier two of cuts. And we have members of all three communities who've been elected by their communities to represent them to make these decisions. These are not normal times.
Hmm.
And this is not a normal process. And we need to be a little bit bold and trust each other at this point. All we have is each other right now. We can't we can't count on the state. We can't count on the federal government. We have to lean on each other as the tri-towns right now. And that's what I'm asking you to do is have a little bit of faith in each other and our communities at this point.
So so Jason, just if if we're just looking at a 2% cut in our number, right? Asking the townspeople, the taxpayers to support our budget, but they don't know what's inside of it. And if we have to cut 15%, if chapter 70 goes to 15%, right? Our budget looks completely different and they have no say over what anything happens there. We can't go back to we can't go back to the towns and say, you know what, we're going to advocate stronger for our school system and ask you to come up with more and make cuts in other places because it's so devastating at Silver Lake. I just think you're giving away complete control over what happens with our budget with this move. If we are really looking at a 10 to 15% reduction, we're looking at being around $24 million for a budget. It completely changes the education system that we have at Silver Lake and we're moving forward to pass a number to satisfy two towns that don't know what's going on with their budgets. We're completely losing we're losing the advocacy of the program. Now, I know everyone thinks that I'm all for cutting the programs, at least in my previous roles, right? But I have no idea why any any member of Silver Lake would support doing this because we just lost all control over what happens to the school system. And I just want to be very clear about that.
I appreciate your comments, Gordon. Eric, did you have something you wanted to say?
Not really, but I will.
No, I just thought you had your hand up for a second there.
No, I think I was just holding my face.
Well, there's some consternation on all of our parts, some deeper obviously than others, and we we need we need to know the minority report. We need to understand what the people who voted against this budget, why they did so. And I appreciate that.
Actually, I do want to say something, Jason. So I wasn't.
Go ahead.
I wasn't implying that I'm frustrated with Gordon, not at all, because I appreciate and I appreciate his review and Leslie Ann's point of view and and all of us. I think we all work well together and and I know 100% that everybody that's on this school committee right now wants to do the best for the kids and the staff of Silver Lake. I know that. There's just a difference in opinion in terms of what we're doing now. But I will also say that from Kingston's point of view, and I understand Gordon's concern that it'll be difficult to go back if Kingston already votes their budget, but Kingston is moving forward with their budget with or without us. So their other departments are going to be funded. So it would be the same whether we whether we vote down our number or they vote down our number at their town meeting or not. That's it.
And and I don't I don't believe we would have a problem getting our towns to come back to the table if the cuts are as drastic as 15 to 20% for chapter 70. The last thing our towns want to see is Silver Lake Regional Schools fall apart. Silver Lake Regional Schools are the crown jewel of our three communities. They are our beaches and we have to maintain those beaches. So, you know, that's the analogy that that was told to me when I first got here, you know? That is the pride and joy of our three communities. It's why people move here. And I do not believe the three towns would allow us to sink if the state funding for chapter 70 comes in that low.
Yep.
I believe they would ask us, please, let's have a special town meeting and reconvene and try and and come to some middle ground on that. And I truly believe that, especially after my two years sitting in this chair and and working with the three communities. So I don't see any more comments from the committee.
They didn't let me in.
Okay, go ahead, Ed.
Jason?
Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everybody who's listening hears sped is not a cuttable item. We own it. We federally own it. That that is not something that can be cut. We own it. So there's many things I'd like to say, but that's one thing I'm going to say, just in case there's anybody out there thinking, oh, we can get rid of all of these sped programs. No, we can't. That's all I'll say for tonight.
Appreciate it, Ed. Thank you very much. Leslie Ann, the floor is yours.
You know, I think that there are lots of things as a society, we have to decide what we value. And I'm not going to sit here and give everybody a lecture because there's there's a reason why we're all in this school committee because we care. You know, we care about our students, we care about their education. You know, the future is our educational system. And I don't want anybody to think that me voting no means I don't value that. In fact, I value it really highly. And anybody who voted yes, I don't think that they just unvalue it either or value it lower either. That being said, I just don't feel like as a community outside of our school district, we've had a robust conversation about what it is that we're willing to sacrifice. And so what we've had, what's been happening over the last month and a half is that what we've been saying so far, what we've been asked to say, it is just in my opinion, is that we're going to take half the sacrifice on the schools and half the sacrifice on the rest of the town services and things that are provided. We've been asked to essentially make up about 50% of what the towns or at least the two towns are seeing as their necessary cuts. And I think that's a very strong societal statement and I don't think it's the right one. That's just my opinion. I don't think we should be burdening the schools, even though they do make up 50% of the budget, on making up 50% of the loss. I just value education in our in our communities more than that. You know, there are a lot of things that our communities have to provide to our citizens. You know, one might be plowing roads and there are certainly other ones, but school is right up there for the top for me. And so I would, you know, I don't know what to tell parents when they say, come to me and say, I'm going to go to town meeting, what am I voting for? And I say to them, well, you're voting for a reduced number. And they say, what does that mean? And I'd say, not really sure. Can't tell you. All I know is that it means that we're going to operate on a less on less money than we did before, but we don't know exactly what that means. So I would highly encourage, at least in my town in Kingston, for folks to go to town meeting and vote against this budget.
Leslie Ann, I appreciate everything you just said and I like I'd like to reiterate, I value everyone on the committee regardless of how they voted tonight. But I'm going to respond to the people of my community almost with the same words you just said you would reply to your community with. We were asked to reduce the budget number. The towns are doing the best they can do. The state hasn't given us enough information yet. And I would ask you to vote yes for this budget so we can maintain the programming and the Silver Lake Regional School as being the best possible school we can make it. I would also ask them that if for some miracle that the budget comes in even higher than we're hoping, that we could reentertain where those funds would be spent the same way we would if the numbers come in far below where we're expecting. So Eric, go ahead.
I just wanted to respond to that because I did send, but before we did our our elementary school budget vote earlier this week, I did send a note to the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator and did ask because I was worried that the elementary school committee would do the same thing that we did last week and not vote a budget or something that wasn't something that would be supported. But I did ask if if that the if any of the state funding did come in better than their anticipated 15%, whether a higher priority would be put on education. And the only response I got was from the town accountant who did talk to Tom, called her, our town administrator, but basically they said they cannot give us that commitment. That that was a policy commitment that they could not give. So in in Kingston anyways, their cuts were split 50-50, education and then general government. And education was split between K through six and Silver Lake as we know.
Thank you, Eric. And and just so you know, Plimpton treated every single department the same way. We all stood and and came to tough decisions together in Plimpton. So it's a similar situation in Plimpton and we can we can approach the towns. I see Paula. Can we formulate our request for consideration for more funding if available with a letter to the three towns? I don't think that's a bad idea, Paula. You know, we definitely showed we were good partners this evening and I don't think it would be a bad idea for us to send a formal letter to the three towns asking if there is an increase in funds, maybe if the federal government comes through, if we could come back to the table and see an increase to our funds. I think that's totally valid. Anybody from the committee have any opposition to that letter being sent out on your behalf? Okay, then I'll draft it up and I will sign it from all of us, but I will request that Eric as the vice chair and Paula as the secretary of the committee co-sign it with me. And that would be a member from each of our three communities who sign on to the letter formally.
Okay. Jason, can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Gordon.
So if the state legislature does not affect chapter 70 as bad as uncharted government, we have no recourse here either, correct? Because if the state puts the emphasis on the funding of our schools and not on the other emphasis of our towns, this vote kind of is against that as well, right? I'm just saying, I understand why you want to be open to them, but it it makes no sense to to move forward like we're doing here without knowing what's happening. I understand their issues with 112 budgeting, but I don't think they've taken the time to invest into what that means. We're going to have to go forward with the 112 budget because that's the number that we just gave. We gave a 112 budget because that's the same number. So we're okay to do it, but we're not okay asking the towns to do it.
Well, maybe what's that, maybe that's in the letter that Paula is suggesting as well.
I mean, if chapter 70 isn't isn't cut from the towns, they should be spending more money on education and making the cuts someplace else in the budget according to how the money's supposed to be spent, right?
So once we have those numbers from the state, if the three towns end up seeing that the funds are allocated in ways they didn't try, they couldn't predict at this point. If chapter 70 gets level funded or even increased at the detriment of any other areas of local funds from the state, we might be asked to come back to the table and rebalance our budget. So we're just going to have to be willing to entertain conversations with the towns until things get more settled. But but right now, we do have a budget to present and are there any other comments from the committee members before we move from regular into executive session? Okay, seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing contract negotiations with the Silver Lake Educational Association with the purpose only to return to regular session for the purposes of adjournment.
So moved. This is Leslie Ann.
Thank you, Leslie Ann. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. Mike?
He gave a thumbs up.
Okay, Paula?
Yes, can we have a two-minute break?
Absolutely. Chris?
Yeah.
Thank you. Gordon?
Yes.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie Ann?
Yes, can we have a five-minute break?
Yes, I think that's I think that's fair. Ed?
Yes.
Thank you. Eric?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you very much to everybody involved in the discussion this evening and over the past several weeks. We appreciate you being so committed to the Silver Lake Regional Schools and we hope that you will continue to follow the progress of our discussions. Thank you for being here. Good night.